I'd like to open this meeting on the Falmouth Public School Committee. Do I say the date?
Yes.
Okay, today is July 8th. Okay, so please have a better reading.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Katrina, read the mission of the union, please.
Sure. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
This meeting of the Falmouth School Committee is being recorded in accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Anyone who wishes to make an audio or video recording of this meeting was first notified by the chair. Is there anybody? Okay. So I guess the first thing we'll start with is public comment. Is there any public comment? All right, moving along, we will now have an update from the superintendent.
All right, so, thank you. So yesterday, we started our E S Y Extended School Year Program at the high school. We had a lot of happy faces coming in, both adults and students. And I have to tell you, it is a perfect example of our Clipper experience and the excellence that we provide here in Falmouth. It's, we were, this year, we were fully staffed from the very beginning for a while now. And we were raring to go, and it was great. Also, that started Monday was our Camp Invention, another, I think, excellent example of the Clipper experience that our students have here in Falmouth that many do not other places. But we had lots of students show up, and they're going to do lots of problem solving and scientific thing. I walked in today and we're getting ready for coding. And so very exciting for our summer programs. Later in the summer, we have a four-week program that is the enrichment for Lawrence students. And we have a three-week program of credit recovery for the high school. So we are all set and ready to go, and the high school is just very active. On aside from that, stopped in a couple of times, and I am just absolutely amazed at the number of students that are coming into our wellness center. This summer, we started it a couple of years ago where we staffed the wellness center between wellness center and the field and having it open for our students. And each year it has grown. I was there the other day, and there was a whole group of students playing volleyball. They were in the wellness center, and I walked out to the field, and we had 28 students doing drills on the field for football. And it was just so, the whole school just seemed so active and alive, and it's just so great in the summertime to see so much movement. It's great, so just open up with that. And I want to, you know, I've been giving budget updates, I just, the governor did sign the budget. She vetoed 130 million of the overall budget, which is actually less than the last two years. So that's actually good news. Of the 130, the charters, talking in the education realm, the charter school reimbursement dropped by 20 million, but everything else stayed the same. So for us in Falmouth, we, this year, we, in FY '25, we had 9,621,389 for Chapter 70. And next year, it'll be 9,832,139. So we will, the town receives those dollars, and so there will be an increase to the town on that. On the federal level, we, the state did receive the money for Title I, A, Title I D, Perkins, McKinney, Vento, and IDEA. And so that money we have, so I know that we've talked a lot about this year, you know, we have 100, 1.6 million in federal dollars. And so that's the majority. The grants that they are, that we did not receive and that the state is telling us to prepare, we're not receiving them this year, it still could happen, but we should be preparing, but we will not see. Are the Title I C, Title II A, Title III A, Title IV A, and Title IV B. And I'll explain each one. So of the, of those, we had three of the five ones that we have. Title II A is our, we look at it as our professional development grant. And we have about 66,000 plus in that. The Title III grant helps us with our multilingual learners. And that's, we get about 31,000 for that. And Title IV, we get about 35,000. Total is going to be 133,000 dollars, basically, that we are now looking to see where, if there's anything that we, you know, that we can tighten up, may not do, but also looking at some other funding that we can make that up. So all in all, compared to where we were several months ago, and our worries, I think that, as disappointed as I am, that, you know, we're looking at 133,000, we're much better shape than, you know, than what we were, we were concerned about. So, and we'll be able to do that, we'll give updates through the year, I just wanted to let you know where our standing is on that.
Tara, can we ask questions?
Excuse me?
Can we ask a question? Can I have a question? So can, do we, what's the flexibility for like Chapter 70? Can we use those dollars to make, because Chapter 70 is going up, but the other things are going down. Can we use those dollars to try and make up that shortfall, or does?
If that money actually gets passed to us. So some years in the past it has and some it hasn't, it goes to the town. And our budget was set at the nine, you know, 9,621, also for the FY '26 school year. So the extra 210,750, we may not enter in our budget till the following year. So, I mean, those are some little, it's a good question, some of the little details that I think we have to work out now, but we actually have actual, you know, the governor signed the budget, and we actually have actual numbers now.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, the Title I is intact?
Title I.
And what is?
IDEA, which are our two biggest grants.
Okay. And what was for?
Title IV is?
So Title, Title IV, we're able to use for student learning experience. So you can use it for instruction, technology, and digital tools. But we historically flexed Title IV into Title II.
Okay.
And spend it that way.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You're all set?
Thank you.
All right. What's on our agenda will be a first read on the budget development timeline.
So in front of you, you have the flow chart, this is what you receive every year. It pretty much looks the same. Last year, we started adding a meeting in September. We have continued that practice, just as we think it's, it's good to start the year out with a budget subcommittee and talk about the funding from the very beginning. But it follows the same, you know, so we have some budget subcommittee on the 16th. We have a budget subcommittee on October 28th. And then, yeah, okay, so then, and then the budget subcommittee meetings then pick up in November and then December. In between, Paul will work with the principals on the school budgets, and then they get submitted. We'll review those. And we, Paul and I will present a preliminary budget at the end of November, and then we'll do a full presentation in December. We'll repeat the presentation in January, which right before the budget hearing, which will be January 13th. And then the school committee is slated to vote on the budget on January 27th, and then we'll be ready and in line for the FinCom in February.
Are there any questions? My red. Starting with the right, we've learned now. Any questions, Margaret?
Is, are these the only subcommittee meetings we're going to have for us, or we're going to have more subcommittee meetings for the internal group?
I think Paul is planning on some additional meetings, but this is the budget with FinCom.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
No. Alice?
No. No.
Okay. So I'm wondering if we already had a chance to share this with FinCom, or if we can, so I just, they have a different schedule than we have, I just want to make sure they can make it to the ones that, I wouldn't want to double book us.
Well, I'll make sure you know that when you go back to.
I'm sure it's fine, but I don't want to seem like that, you know, it don't have to be an oversight.
There's not much changes from year to year.
Yeah.
I mean, there, I mean, there's actually no change from the last year, the schedule, so I'm going to guess that it'll be fine, but we will definitely check with them.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to act on student activities accounts. We had no questions or comments since the first read.
So we've had no questions or comments since.
And we had no questions or comments, so I would like to make a motion to, or no, I would like someone to make a motion to.
Make a motion.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay, is there, do you have a question?
No, no, I'm just saying I.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Next will be to act on the capital plan.
So there is a change, if you'll turn to the capital plan, when we presented this last time, Paul had presented 870,000, and it came to our attention, this is, this is why we do first read, and then we have, it came to our attention that we forgot the playground mats, which is a new item for us. If you remember, last year, it got shifted from DPW into our school budget, and so our capital budget. And so we, we did unfortunately leave that off, so you will, that's the only change in what you're voting. And as we had stated, the last meeting, you are voting for the FY '26 capital plan only. So we only vote on one year at a time, that will actually be presented at the November town meeting. So the, the change there is the playground mats at the bottom, that brought it to 900,000.
Any comments or questions, starting with Kelly this time?
Nope.
Chris?
Nope.
No.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, all right, so. All those in favor?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor? Any no's or abstentions? Okay, unanimous, good. Next on the agenda is to act on town meeting article to replenish Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Thank you. So as you know, we've talked all through last school year about needing to draw down funds from the stabilization fund. We also talked to you about in November, asking for it to be replenished. So Paul has presented to you in your packet, the language. Just to make sure that we're on the same page, I'm going to read what we're asking to vote, and that is what's in red. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $1 million to replenish the Special Education Stabilization Fund for the purposes of funding costs associated with the provision of special education to determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended, or do or take any other action in the matter on request of the select board. And with that said, know that substantially, nothing would change with that, but it could get tweaked at Town Hall. Could be the town manager or the business manager. That the town could change a little bit on that, but that, that's what you're voting on, is that piece of it. So basically, you're voting to ask the town to vote to replenish the fund by 1 million.
Comments or questions, we'll start in the middle. Glenda?
No.
Sue?
No.
No.
Just one comment, and it has nothing to do with the actual language that we vote on, that since the language, this potential language in black is in here, I always find at town meeting that there's, not always, but there's sometimes confusion about the phrase "out of district education." And so in that sentence, after, before the bold, where it says, "An increase in the number of students needing out of district education," I just don't want people to think that that means charter schools, or kids going to the tech, that if it said "out of district special education," it might be more clear.
We can, yeah, we'll make note of that.
Margaret, could it be for our students who need out of district education?
Something like.
I think it's important that they know that it's our students that we're not.
It's Falmouth Public Schools.
The public Falmouth School students who need.
Who need special education.
I think that's important for them to understand, I absolutely.
Because it's always a question, people are like, why are we putting stabilization money for, for kids to go to the tech?
Okay, well, we'll suggest that language.
No guarantees on that, thanks. I just can't remember how much we, when we did this the last time, how much was it? Is this kind of a normal amount, I just can't remember, is this going to come as a shock to people? We've had this conversation for a couple of years.
We've, we've had it on the floor of town meeting. We had it with Finance Committee several times over the last couple of years. So I don't think this is going to be a surprise to anyone. But Paul's done a nice job communicating it to everyone, certainly town meeting on a regular, or town, town offices, town manager, assistant town manager, finance person, you know, on a regular basis, but we certainly have everyone else as well. But thank you.
Melissa?
No, miss.
Okay. So, would someone make a motion then?
My move that we accept the, the material as amended.
We're not amended, so we're just.
Yes, we did, we amended it.
But she amended what we're going to suggest sort of FinCom, you're only voting on the red.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought.
Can you make a motion to accept the red?
I make a motion to accept the material written in red for Article 20.
Thanks, Chris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is to act on surplus journey books.
Yeah, so the reason we have a surplus of journey books is because we have moved to the EL education of our ELA program, kindergarten through sixth grade. You've heard Dr. Teller report on this through this year. We've actually have the new curriculum. We started professional development in May with the teachers, and the initial, the PD will continue throughout next year. But we, one of the things we talked about, we needed a new curriculum, so that we really were in, mostly in a one-stop shop, we have the, the science of reading. We have always met the science of reading, but it's been through journeys and through, you know, this program and developing some of our own materials. But in this, this is one of the programs that was certainly reviewed by Desi and was on the list that meets the, the science reading. So we're very pleased, we went through, Sonia led a rigorous process last year of looking, starting with three programs and having, you know, teachers look at those, we cut it down to two, they piloted it. And then we, then the selection came, and then we got started. So these books now moving, if you'll, you'll see, at per-grade level across the the schools, the number of books that are, that we need a surplus, that we will no longer be using. Sonia put the note at the end, I think, which we always try to see if someone would want them or use them so that we can repurpose. But just please know that's very difficult, and that may or may not happen.
Comments or questions, starting with Kelly this time?
Nope, none, thanks.
No's?
No.
Will we be able to get a presentation on the new, the new curriculum?
Oh, absolutely. I look forward to having that on the agenda.
Alice?
I think I asked this last year, but can you just remind me why it is difficult to find homes for used textbooks? Is it because everybody's moving to a curriculum around the country and nobody is?
So two, two things, I mean, sometimes we, we look at other countries that we may be able to provide materials, it's very difficult to have them shipped. And it's, it's just, it's a process that's, that's very difficult. As far as locally, that's absolutely right. I mean, journeys is really not on the list, and everyone's moving to, you know, different curriculum, so it's, it's hard in-state, but it's hard to actually get them out.
Yeah, they're heavy. Yeah, I know, I was thinking of Cabo Verde, but.
Yeah, I know, I mean, the only chance we have with that is some load some suitcases and either on our trip over, everyone takes an extra suitcase, or when they come to visit, we load up, which we, we've been doing actually the last couple of trips, as we've been trying to do. So, I mean, that is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret? No? Okay. All right, would someone make a motion then to?
I make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
So thanks.
Who wants it?
Chris?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next will be to act on our operating protocols. I'll just say something about this. Okay, it's, I believe, a state regulation, or may, maybe it's M A S, S, M A C recommendation. Margaret, you got me stumbling over those letters now. Anyway, that it's done after the elections, we usually tackle it in the summer, so we made a few little edits. And it's basically our yearly review of our protocols. We had 18 going into this year, we combined two into one, so now we only have 17. It's basically our operations, our communications, and our decision-making.
We only have 16. Yeah, what's missing?
It's this number.
Oh, okay.
13 in the.
Oh, there we go. See, I told you they're getting mistaken.
And then the number nine is out of alignment.
Yeah, we can fix this.
This was just the draft, but they're, they're all, okay. Anybody want to, maybe if somebody could just read one from each category, just to bring them to life. Chris, do you read number one, or pick anyone you like from operations?
Okay. I'll do number seven. Operate respectfully and in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law in deliberations while maintaining operational and executive session confidentiality.
Okay.
I'll do one.
Okay.
I was just calling, and not everybody likes to be called. How about 13? Channel questions, concerns, and requests for information or data through the school committee chair and the superintendent, rather than directly to district staff.
I'll do one.
All right, Melissa, go ahead.
I'm going to do number four. Acknowledge that a school committee meeting is a business meeting of the school committee that is held in public, not a public meeting.
Okay.
I'll do number 15.
Go ahead.
Engage in critical thinking, expecting all committee members to freely offer differing points of view as part of the discussion prior to making a board decision.
Margaret?
Number one, represent the needs, interests, and achievements of all students in the district and place these above all else in the decisions that we make.
Sue?
New 14, keep an open mind and strive to make decisions by consensus using the best information available at the time, considering available facts, research, best practice, public input, and the superintendent's and other members' recommendations, proposals, and suggestions.
Glenda?
I'll do 10. Work to build trust between and among school committee members, the superintendent, staff, students, parents, and guardians in the town, in the town administration by treating everyone with dignity and respect.
Okay, so that was some of the protocols that we try to adhere to each and every year. Okay, so would somebody make a motion to accept these new protocols as?
Make the motion, of course, we'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now we have routine business, which would be the minutes. Is there any discussion about the minutes, any edits or anything? No?
No.
Okay, someone make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Okay. They pass. Okay, any committee reports? It's the off-season. Any requests for follow-ups? Yes, Margaret?
Understanding that we're going to be talking about the recent, and I don't mean this, I thought somehow the conversation was before, since we're having a decrease in membership in our schools over the last 30 years, and we're going to have to make some major decisions. And we're not going to have another meeting until September. I would think it, maybe it would be good for us to have a meeting maybe in August or something, so we could just have a major discussion about what's happening, what our thoughts are as we read the materials that we've been given. Because we're going to have broken agenda items, and this is a major issue that we're going to have to be looking at next year. And so I, I just think it might be, and we haven't talked about it yet, I think it might be good if we, in fact, have a meeting in August where we spent a meeting just talking about that, totally.
So noted?
I have a, I have a quick follow-up question, two meetings ago, or was it three meetings ago? We had done that very elaborate, complex effort to get the Building Needs Task Force to give us their recommendation on the motion that we had amended. And they did not formally do that, and so I'm wondering what the next step is for that.
So you're talking about their final report?
No.
I'm sorry.
So Mike's motion, that I then amended. We referred it to the Building Needs Task Force, and they were supposed to report back on the 24th, and I forgot to ask about it on the 24th. So we never got a closure on that, which means we never actually voted on the motion as amended.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
I definitely gave an update on the 24th.
Yes, did you give an update about specifically then responding to that? Well, in any case, we didn't vote, we didn't close out the vote, so I don't know if we need to do that in September, or if we just.
It was just an update from Building Needs on how the group wrapped up the. There was nothing.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump that on you, it's just something I forgot about when we were talking about protocols, and I don't know what the protocol is for that, so.
But what we did report on was, and this is, was the decision that not to consider.
Correct.
And, but the one and seven, and any other recommendations and options on the table.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what more you want to do.
No, it was more about the procedure of our vote, I don't know if we finished it, because we were pending them coming back, and I don't know if we were supposed to. Anyway.
We could do some offline research for that, I don't think anybody has the answer.
Okay, no, and I forgot to ask.
No, no. Feel free to ask it, okay, we'll, we'll research it for you, okay?
Okay.
Apropos of both of your comments, and I apologize, I was not here for the meeting on the 24th, so perhaps this was discussed. But following the, it was the update of the Building Needs Task Force. Where, where are we with that? Are we getting a report? Are we going to have a discussion? Perhaps this was talked about at the previous meeting, but I'm unclear about next steps as far as where we are with that.
So the committee has dissolved now, they have, and they do have a final report, and I did receive the final report, we did not have it on June 25th to share out, but we did have the final report now.
And when will we be in that, and when will we be just? I'm, I'm just wondering how, you know, what are next, you know, how we're proceeding now, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's what Margaret. Yeah, I think that's what Margaret said.
And, and if I, I was, I was the only person at that meeting, but I think that what the task force did leave was they made some decisions that they sent to us, but then they also said that it's up to the school committee to work it out. You know, they made some recommendations, but it was our job to implement them and make decisions about them. And I think that sort of speaks to what you're asking about, Katrina.
Right. Okay, so that seems to be on three people's minds, so we'll be getting back to you about that. You worry, okay, all of us actually.
I would like to know if other members think that maybe we should have a meeting, uh, because we, we're gonna have a full agenda for the year and this is a major issue that we have to deal with. And that I think would be in our, all of our best interests to have a meeting in August where we just focus on the issues and be, have a beginning discussion, not make any decisions, just have a discussion. Because time is moving along.
Chris?
Uh, I'm, I'm in total agreement with that. I think, um, the, the faster we can kind of start that conversation, uh, the better.
Okay, yeah. So enough, it's, it's a majority anyway, but already we can see that. So how that's gonna come about is what I meant about getting back to you. Okay?
Okay.
All right. You know?
Right.
So with all that being said, it's time to move into executive session now. So. It said, uh, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to conduct strategy session with respect to negotiations with FBA units A, B, C, and D. Having these discussions in public session may be detrimental to the school committee's harmony. It's anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session.
Right.
You need a second?
Yeah, all those in favor? Was it a roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, Kelly?
Yes.
Lommy, yes.
Augusta, yes.
One, yes.
Lizzy, yes.
Devin, yes.
Susie, yes. And Madeira's, yes, so. Okay.